There's good stuff in the fridge. There's all kinds of stuff in the fridge. We had a pot over here.
Yeah, we have a pot over here.
I can't even get down.
Yeah.
Text them to fill up this long leg.
All day long, you guys.
All day long, if I always want it.
In fact, I'm gonna have to find my daughter.
My daughter got her most return.
Oh, okay.
That's awesome.
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna show that.
Wow.
Yeah, I said that's really what I thought.
Yeah.
And we're rolling, so.
Let me get this for our time. Just let me just scratch it.
Of course.
Now we're rolling. I'm furious. I'm angry. I need to check.
We're rolling, so.
Have you referenced that code section yet, sir?
Yeah, yeah. I feel the sneeze coming on. I have to check with our attorney.
I do. So, yes, we're rolling.
I'm so glad you're taping this.
Yes, we're taping this, so.
Thank you very much.
You may be getting called from a reality show.
This is a reality show.
Yeah, we have comedy club.
All right.
But what will be, is that swamp or something?
Yeah, swamp people, yeah.
This'll be tumbleweeds or something like that.
Yeah, tumbleweed people.
Yes, I actually.
You know that, that trick you told me with the shovel thing?
Uh huh.
That actually really worked.
It's great, it's great. How about forty-eight?
In, in this year.
Or forty-eight this June.
And I've been staying.
Forty-eight this June.
And I water it with my mow it every now and then. And I'm starting to get the grass back.
Hey, and to think she takes her in my checkbook. Another year.
Because the guy who had it before us, he just rounded up everything.
Yeah.
And I had this bumper problem with tumbleweeds.
Yeah. Did you try them with garlic and butter?
No.
You're sorry, dog.
Actually, try what?
Little baby tumbleweeds. Matter of fact, cardboard's good with garlic and butter, you know, so. All right.
Making use of the tumbleweeds as a little bunny polish.
Yeah.
The grilled rabbit.
The, the same guy who told me about, uh, uh, cooking tumbleweeds like that? He said, he said, you gotta have a big old pan of them because they shrink down to nothing. It's like frying spinach or whatever. But they shrink down to nothing. But that same guy said that you can actually pressure cook jackrabbits and they're, and, and he says they're pretty fair. I have a hard time with that one, man. Jackrabbits are like barbed wire with fur on them, you know.
They're, they're gonna carry a lot of this season.
Yeah, they got a lot of stuff, yeah.
Do I have to go to the bathroom?
Hurry. No fucking. Yeah, yeah, depends on how hungry you are.
I remember, I remember at the end of my Colorado River trip.
Yeah.
We were running out of food.
Yeah.
About the last three days we were on it.
Uh huh.
And I later on actually felt sorry for the first cafe that we ran across.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because we all smelled like we'd been on the Colorado River for three weeks.
For three weeks, yeah.
Everything, everything.
Everything, yeah. All right. Yeah, buddy of mine went through Sea and Shore Survival School before he went on the riverboats. And he said, he said, the instructor said, "At the store, they throw this away." We don't, you know.
Yep.
Uh, cool. Well, we, we are, okay, soon as Jamie returns, we're gonna spark up. Soon as, soon as Jamie gets back, let's all watch the chief and just drum our fingers on the table. Okay, Jamie's back. You guys wanna stand up? Are you ready? You guys wanna stand up? Okay, okay, maybe not. Okay, excuse me, we're, we're. Who is it that we were waiting for? Okay, okay.
For a certain vice mayor.
Okay, well, Jamie, if you can, if you can, uh, make sure, do you want me to make sure that our council members are on? Okay. Okay, Councilmember Hatch, are you still with us?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Councilmember McKee, are you still with us?
I'm back with you. We got my, we lost connection, but I'm back.
Okay, excellent. Uh, we are now. No. Vice Mayor Croft is almost back with us. Okay, we are going to go ahead and call to order. Uh, may we have the roll call, Ms. Lewis?
Councilmember McKee?
Here.
All right. Councilmember Turner?
Here.
Councilmember Wojcik is absent. Councilmember Hatch?
Here.
Councilmember Best?
Here.
Vice Mayor Croft?
Here.
Mayor Marley?
Here. Excellent. Our first item of business in the study session is a presentation by staff and discussion regarding the fiscal year 2015-2016 preliminary budget. Mr. Joe Duffy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Um, tonight I have a relatively brief, uh, information. Yes, ma'am.
Can you sit more clear via to the microphone, please, come over to the door directly?
Okay, can you hear me now? How's this?
Okay, that's a little bit better, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. McKee can hear you. Uh, can Ms. Hatch hear you? Ms. Hatch, can you hear Mr. Duffy okay?
He's pretty muffled to me.
Okay, uh, make sure you speak as clear as you can into the microphone, Joe.
Okay, I'll do the best I can. Um, I passed out a handout with basically our, our revenue summaries and our fund balance summaries for each of our major funds. And I wanna go over one of them, the general fund, with you in detail. And then I'll let you guys look at the rest of them as we go through the presentation. Um, so tonight, one of the things that, through the budget process, I really wanna emphasize is about in January, when we first started, we had about a $450,000 gap that we had to come up with, that we had to fill. And I really wanna pat the, all the department heads on the back and everything that's done because they have all come to the table and brought savings from this year's budget and even into next year's budget. And we have really closed that gap. We are down to just about a balanced budget in the general fund and all the other funds. So, but we still have some major challenges ahead. And one of them is our enterprise funds, as we've talked several times. They continue to operate in the red. Now, the sanitation fund, since we've acquired the wastewater treatment plant, we're expecting that to come out pretty quick here. But the water fund, of course, still needs some help. Um, the town's overriding goal in our budget process and everything that we've been working towards is to stop the rate increases for the water and sewer funds as soon as possible. We know that they're a burden on our community and we wanna do whatever we can financially to help that and to prevent those. Um, we also, our, our funds available for road maintenance, because of the HERF revenue funding has been down, is diminishing really fast. The road maintenance we're doing right now, we're doing off what we had in the bank, the savings, or the fund balance. And no funds are, are being set aside for future capital needs and/or capital replacement. So, we're living off depreciation. And eventually, things need to be replaced. So, those are the three overriding budget challenges that we're trying to address. And we have addressed them all to some extent, but we're not quite there yet. Um, tonight, I just wanna briefly go over the general fund, HERF, capital improvements, water and sewer enterprise funds. And this is a, the screen I'm putting up now is what your packet looks like. And this is actually the general fund. And I know for the, for the people at home in the audience, it's really cluttered with the numbers. But I just wanna spend just a minute with the council members and just tell you what it is. Basically, we have every, we've started with our budget, but we started our fund balance with this fiscal year. So, for the general fund, um, what I tried to show here every time is if you look at the budget fifteen, sixteen, that's next year's budget.
What's on the screen is the sewer fund.
Oh, okay. They're all the same. They're, they're actually all the same. I, I put up the sewer fund by mistake, so I should probably have the general fund there. But in your packet, you'll notice in the yellow line, the total revenues of each of the funds, and there's the five. The, the bolded fund, the budget fifteen, sixteen, is what we're working at this year. The yellow is the total revenues that we're receiving for each fund. The green is the total expenditures. And the blue line is what I really want council to pay attention to because that's showing you how much the revenues or expenditures are, are up or down for each of the funds that we talk about tonight. And then we just carry that fund balance forward as it goes up and down. The, the bottom yellow line is your total available resources. And, and depending on the fund, like with the general fund, what we do is we have our fund balance, but we have to take out that inter-fund loan with the water. So, we actually reduce it. The available resources is, is pretty close to the cash we have available to operate that fund every year. And then the line below that is the minimum requi- reserve requirement, which we need to make sure that we have fully funded for each fund. So, that's really how I want you to read these. Now, what we have done is we budgeted out for five years. And we're gonna come with you with a balance, a budget, a balanced budget for next fiscal year, but also for the next four years. So, as things come up and change, we can, we can just move the moving parts, knowing that we have a clear picture where we're gonna be in five years. So, where in the past, the last couple of years, we've just let those go and we haven't really paid too much attention to them.
Uh, excuse me, Joe, will you entertain questions at the end of each panel or just as they come up?
As you guys ask them, that's fine, so.
Okay. Well, for our, our two council members that are on the telephone, uh, if you have a question, please just speak up then. And, uh, and, uh, um, for the rest of us, if, when we hit the end of a panel, I'm good if we can raise a question then, so.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
How's this gonna be impacted if the funds in the, from the state change?
Well, one, we have the current year's estimate on it. So, it's the fifteen year, fifteen, sixteen year, our next budget year, we're pretty solid. But if we do have changes, and even changes in the economy, we'll have to make those changes for the future years.
Okay.
So, it could affect us, but right now, we're projecting all the revenues stay pretty consistently and pretty even with what they've been. But you never know what's gonna happen at state legislature.
Okay. Uh, Joe, on your, uh, on your, your blue line there, revenues under or over expenditures, were, were within $50,000?
Right.
On the general fund?
On the general fund.
Okay.
Right, and I'll explain why that is.
Okay, okay. I was gonna say, out of a, what, $16 million budget? That's pretty fair, so.
Right.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Mayor, write your check.
So, the general fund budget, what we've done is in about fiscal year thirteen and fourteen, we finally got above our reserve line. And on this graph, that red line is our minimum reserve requirement. That's what our financial policies dictate we do. And as you can see, in fiscal year fourteen, we broke that line, so we have a little excess funding available. Now, in January, when we started this process, we were projecting that the line was gonna tip down and, and go below that line this, after this fiscal year. But we've made enough cuts and enough adjustments that we're essentially, we're gonna go up a little bit this fiscal year. And then we're projecting we're gonna stay flat and actually do a little bit better in the future fiscal years. So, we've made a significant progress towards that. And that's really, you know, that's really because of the department heads, what they've been able to do and, and cut expenses.
Excellent. Excuse me for a second. Mr. Smith, did you please speak into the mic, if you would?
I'm sorry, Joe. I just wanted to make sure that, as we go through the presentation, the assumptions behind the charts are mentioned. So, the inclusion of additional water accounts, break even on the sewer enterprise, they need to know if those are in the assumptions or not.
Okay, I'd be happy to do that, yeah. So, okay, so let me move on to this slide. Now, some of the changes, just sorta, just so you, council, you can see, is we've had a, these are the changes for this current fiscal year. And we're gonna roll out of this fiscal year with a, with a carryover of about $254,000. And it's because, um, things like election savings at $25,000. We didn't fill a part-time rec position, another $29,000. I'll just hit the big ones. Uh, facilities had twenty. We've got fuel savings. Gas prices are going down, $10,000. And the biggest portion, of course, is the contingency funds. They're, they're being down. Now, we've had some expenses that are increased. Uh, we hired the HR position earlier than we planned. Uh, we've had a major police vehicle repair that we didn't expect. Our legal fees are high and they're continuing to grow high. And, uh, we had some deductibles and liability insurance increases. But all in all, the savings far outweighed the expenses. And we're gonna, it looks like we're gonna roll over with an extra quarter million dollars towards next year in the general fund.
Okay.
Now, next year, some of these savings continue, like the fuel savings. Um, the, the police department has, instead of filling a one-part, full-time position, they've split the position, position in half and have now two part-time positions, saves all the benefits, the health insurance ASRS. Um, the election we're not gonna have this year that we had projected prior, and then just a whole combination of other costs add up to another $72,000. We are facing some headwinds, though. Um, our health insurance expense increased five percent, which, but over all the departments, and with the new mix of employees, it only costs us $12,000. Our HR department's budget's going up because of the new employee. Um, police and PRS increases. Um, PRS continues to go up and up and up, so that's a major factor every year. Liability insurance is up slightly. We've increased our merchant and bank audit, bank and audit fees. Our new auditors cost a little bit more. Our merchant fees are up just a little bit. And, um, our bank fees are, are up a little bit. Um, I've increased the contingency by $23,000 because it's five percent of our general expenses, so that formula. Um, so, senior center up just a little bit and, and the library. So, all in all, we've had a few things go up this next year. And in total, it's about $167,000 or about a two percent increase in the general fund. So, pretty, pretty light. I mean, it's been, it's been a good year. Um, so, the general fund is projected to have a carryover balance of $284,000. We're recommending transferring $50,000 of that over to the HERF fund. And, Mr. Mayor, that's where the $50,000 comes in. We would like to transfer that fifty from the general fund to the HERF to help supplement the road materials budget. Right now, it's $75,000. And that'll give the public works department $125,000 for road repairs. I'm thinking that this practice is probably what we ought to start considering doing almost every year. And if we have $200,000 and roll over next year, maybe shift $100,000 for the next year's roads. And continue to push, try to put as much money in those, that road budget as, as possible, so.
Okay.
Um, we've also transferred $150,000 from the capital improvement fund, and that's to subsidize the aquatic center. And once we do this, we're probably gonna end up doing it every year until our revenues, you know, do well.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Um, the HERF fund is actually, as you can see, the, this chart shows the revenues and expenses. And as you can see, the revenues never really actually keep up with the expenses in the fund. The green line shows the amount that we have budgeted for road materials. And that is going down and down. Next year, we'll have the $125,000. The year after that, I think we're going to like $75,000, and then after that's $25,000. So, we need to, and that's why we, we need to bring money in from another source. I'm recommending the general fund if they have the carryover. So, every year, we can just, we'll just plug what we have available into the roads to, to do as much as we can. Because of deferred maintenance on the road, it's cheaper to fix a road today than to let it go a year or two. It's gonna cost us more, so.
Okay.
It's not enough, but at least it's a start in the right direction.
All right.
Um, this is the capital improvement fund. And as you know, this is one percent of the sales tax we collect. And the red bar is how much we pay for debt service. And that was to do the park and the, the pool, the aquatic center and all that. The blue, the purple is what's going to the water and sewer fund. The green is the $100,000 we've been transferring over each year into the general fund for the police officers. Blue is the grant match. And the, the now gold at the top of each bar is what we're transferring in for the aquatic center. What this, and the, the amount above or below that blue bar is extra funds that we are not budgeting to spend. So, the capital improvements fund's bet, fund balance is gonna increase every fiscal year. There are additional funds available, but we're not recommending spending them all at this time. So, now, what happens, though, I, I did another slide. Let's assume we complete the acquisition of the Prescott water fund, or the water system. And now, we take, this, the purple that's going to the water system right now decreases dramatically in the future fiscal years. And that really increases the amount of funds we have for capital improvements in future fiscal years. So, my point being that it's critically important that we complete that transaction and acquire the Prescott water system. For financially, it's probably one of the best things the town could do at this point in time. So, I just wanted to show you the difference between those two slides, that there's a significantly more money if, you know, once we've acquired it. And once we don't have to transfer money from this fund to the water system.
Okay. Excuse me for a second. I have a question for our town manager. Uh, Mr. Smith, sometime back, I asked Mr. Gritman if he could begin researching into how we can get our, our water system to where it is, it is not such a tremendous financial and electrical drain on the town. Our, our power costs for that are huge because of having to move the water, because the tank is in the wrong location. Has he, has he managed to make any progress on that? Or are we, are we holding out to see if the Prescott water acquisition has gone forward?
I don't think we have hard numbers on that, Mayor.
Okay.
I think, uh, it, it is clear that if we use gravity instead of pneumatic pumping, it would be a lot cheaper to operate the system. Uh, but I don't think he has a financial plan pieced together for that yet.
Okay.
Um, and, and while, while we are talking about savings, um, I did wanna say, all of the leadership went back to their departments and reprioritized what they're gonna do this year and next year and put things off into the future. So, there were things that they wanted to accomplish that we've shelved to pull the sides of this gap together.
You bet.
Um, but as Joe's showing here, the sooner we acquire those users, the quicker we start building reserves. These amounts up over the orange bar, between the orange bar and the blue line, those are additive every year.
Right.
So, they accumulate every year. It's not like it's just that little amount that we have in our pocket. And over several years, you're putting together, you know, millions of dollars.
Huge, yeah. If, if we can, if we can get the water fund to stop draining the lifeblood out of our general fund, it's gonna be a good thing, so.
Right. And this is an area where we'll have capital improvement funds available for maybe helping with the water system.
You bet.
You know, take care of that problem, so. Um, and this is, you know, I'm just recommending that we hold on to these funds until we get the Prescott water system. And then we'll be in a much better position to decide how, what capital improvements we wanna work on with the funds. So, um, the water fund, this is, the water fund and the sewer fund, but the water fund does not have any projections for the Prescott acquisition. And the graph with that on it looks substantially, substantially better than this graph. But as the status quo, um, you can see every year, the water fund's expenses exceed the revenues. And to cover that, the court, the cash deficiency is the amount that we're transferring in from the capital improvement fund. Um, this is what the water fund will look like after we acquire the Prescott water system. And you can see, and this is assuming we take it over on July first of, uh, 2016. And this, almost immediately, we turn, we turn a profit. We become a profitable enterprise. And the green line is the capital improvement funds coming in. And they, like I showed in the prior graph, they just drop off to nothing real quick. We need to keep them for a year or two, just to build the reserves up in the water system. But once we've done that, we're, it's, we're over. And the water system should carry itself substantially. This also doesn't project a lot of growth. I mean, it's very conservative on our growth projections, the number of new houses. So, with any type of housing growth, these numbers are gonna look even better.
Joe, could you talk a little bit about timing on attempting to try and freeze rate increases along this chart?
Yeah, actually, let me do that on the, on the sewer, the next chart here. Um, and that's a really good point. Here's our sewer system. And as you know, Mayor and Council, you made a wise decision and, and purchased, or basically got us out of the CMR at risk, um, on the, with the wastewater treatment plant. Now, one of the things that we do have in the sewer, the new sewer plant's budget, is we have one position, one full position, as a plant operator. And, but we're not anticipating filling that right yet. We're gonna see how the plant operations go, how our existing staff handle operating the plant. So, there's a little bit of buffer in there, just in case. We might fill it with a lesser position than a, than a full plant operator also. But as you can see, this fiscal year, I'm projecting we're gonna break even. Next fiscal year, we're clearly gonna be doing better. And with any sort of growth in our housing, any new houses connecting to the system, we're even gonna do better than this. I hope that in December, right before we institute the next rate increase, that I can come to you with an analysis that'll show you that maybe we can defer that rate increase.
Good.
Six months or a year, I hope. But the numbers will tell. And, and our, our problem is, is right now, we do not know the exact cost of operating that plant.
Right.
Once we have those down, nailed down, then we can do the projections and see, you know, whether the rate plan that we adopted for the sewer plant will have to go up. The water, once we acquire the water system, we'll do the same analysis.
Okay.
So, um, I mean, that's our goal, and we wanna be able to do that, but we gotta make sure that we're, we don't sabotage the system.
Right, right. That's, that's huge, that we don't stop the rate increases and, and say, "Wahoo," and then three months later have to raise them again.
Right, right. And, and we do need to have these systems generating enough of a profit so we have money for capital replacement. You know, pumps wear out, you know, and things need to be replaced. Wastewater treatment plant, I mean, it's not gonna run forever without having these things that need to be replaced. So, we need to start building our equipment reserves and funding them. Yeah, just fund a repair and replacement fund every year as part of the budget. So, when we have a major issue come up, we have some cash to pay for it.
One other quick question regarding the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, the, the aerator membranes, we, do we have a, a set schedule on purchasing those? Or are you aware of anything on that?
Um, I did talk to Mike Fauvay, and I'm looking at Robert to confirm this, but they are, they are gonna be delivered or onsite here really quick and installed within like the next thirty days, is what my understanding. I know we're gonna be paying for them pretty quick, so.
Most excellent.
Yeah, but they, they have, I think they're in Prescott. They've been delivered, so it's just getting them installed now, so.
Most cool, thank you.
But turning over the operations, our, our guys need another pat on the back. We're taking it over on April first. That is remarkable. That's saving us $80,000, just like that. So, these guys need, they've done a great job on, on getting that plant and getting it under our belt, so.
You bet.
Um, so, as far as the capital requirements, and this is one of our major, um, issues that we do need to deal with. We have made a little headway, but we need to continue to work on this. As you know, this year, we purchased $715,000 worth of equipment. You know, a backhoe, a loader, three dump trucks, and five police cars. We had enough left in this budget year to actually acquire one more police car. And we're gonna have, we're gonna be about $4,000 short in outfitting it. But the police, between police department and fleet maintenance, we're gonna be able to afford to do that. So, we planned on four. We're gonna actually buy five. Um, no equipment purchases are planned for this next year, except for one pickup truck in the sewer plant. We just have one there, and we're just gonna pay for it. Um, in budget year fifteen, or sixteen, seventeen, we, we budgeted in one police car. And then subsequent years, we're gonna try to budget two police cars per year. Because we think if we can just pay for two cars a year and not have to borrow money and pay interest on them, that we'll keep up. And, and we'll look at that before the final decision. So these guys need, they've done a great job on, on getting that plant and getting it under our belt, so. So as far as the capital requirements, and this is one of our major issues that we do need to deal with. We have made a little headway, but we need to continue to work on this. As you know, this year, we purchased $715,000 worth of equipment. You know, a backhoe, a loader, three dump trucks, and five police cars. We had enough left in this budget year to actually acquire one more police car. And we're going to have, we're going to be about $4,000 short in outfitting it. But the police, between police department and fleet maintenance, we're going to be able to afford to do that. So we planned on four, we're going to actually buy five. No equipment purchases are planned for this next year, except for one pickup truck in the sewer plant. We just have one there, and we're just going to pay for it. In budget year 15, or 16, 17, we, we budgeted in one police car. And then subsequent years, we're going to try to budget two police cars per year. Because we think if we can just pay for two cars a year and not have to borrow money and pay interest on them, that we'll keep up. And, and we'll look at that before the final decision is made. But in our projections, in our future year projections, we're starting to drop capital in, and they're still staying in balance. So, you know, cross our fingers that continues. The roads, we're, we're planning on using carryover from the general fund to start funding the road improvements and start getting some more cash going that direction. The water system, after the Prescott Water Acquisition, we need to have a system expansion plan that should be developed to say, "Okay, now, we need to make these capital improvements, we need to make these repairs, and we need to start funding that capital reserve, repair and replacement fund, putting money aside." And then the WIFA funding, we have a project, a $500,000 project next budget year, and that's essentially to run a sewer line from Center Street up to the Will Hoyt or the Molly Ray subdivision. They have 106 lots, there'll probably be about 100 of them that are ready to go on sewer. They did put a dry sewer in that subdivision, so it makes really good sense. WIFA. One of the things I forgot to talk about earlier is, we're recommending that we refinance the USDA debt with WIFA. And we can cut our rate from 4.5% down to about 2%. But they require a new project, they require new money, they can't just refinance it. So Ron's come up with, I think, a very viable project, a very easy project to do. The $500,000 number is really from them, the magnitude of project they would like to see to refinance $4 million worth of debt. And so, and there's other properties on the way up Center Street, as you know. So we may be able to get more connections in through that, too. 100 units, once they're all hooked up, they generate $6,000 apiece in sewer buying fees. And so they in themselves will pay for the sewer line over time, will get the money back, so, but.
Excuse me, do you have a ballpark idea when this, this, you have a bullet point? WIFA Funding will complete a $50,000 or $500,000 project next budget year. That sewer line, you're figuring next budget year to have that line run?
Yes.
Okay.
And developed.
Hold for just a second. We, as a council, need to sit and, and, and visit about our, our code dealing with, with the sewer hookups. That's been a, a big one with me, so. Just giving our town manager a little heads up and giving our council a little heads up. We, we need to sit down at the table and talk about that one. That one's been a big one with me from day one, so. All right, yes, sir.
Yeah, we've applied with WIFA, we're, we've, we've got on their PPL. They'll start sending us the forms that we need to do the refinancing, and we'll bring it to you guys for your approval as soon as we can on it. But it's one of those things that will save the Sewer Enterprise Fund about $40,000 a year in interest, which is a big number, and it's really going to help us be able to cut those rates or hold those rates, let me say, hold those rates, sooner than later, so. And so, as far as budget priorities, from my perspective as a finance director, is the number one thing is acquire the Prescott Water System. We need to get that done. And the other is to refinance the USDA sewer debts. Those two things combined will have the most financial impact, positive financial impact for the community, so. And finally, the last steps that we need to take to complete the budget. The next three weeks, we're preparing the draft budget book. We want to have a, we're thinking of maybe just having one budget hearing with the departments this year, sort of changing the format a little bit. And doing that on April 23rd as a study session. We'll bring the tentative budget to you, which will be essentially the same one we do on the 23rd on May 14th, unless there's any changes or adjustments that council directs us to do. We adopt the tentative budget on May 26th, publish it the first and second time on May 27th and June 3rd, and then bring it to your final adoption on June 23rd. So with that, I'll entertain any questions or?
Okay. Our council members that are on the phone, did you have any questions for Mr. Duffy?
I couldn't really make out much of what he said. I can hear you and the town manager did fine, but Joe Duffy is so muffled that the words are running together, so I apologize. I couldn't understand anything.
Okay, well, hopefully, I asked some of the questions that you would have asked Councilwoman Hatch. The especially, I know you're especially concerned about our, our code regarding the sewer hookups. And it's been a great concern with myself and several of the other council members. So we'll be having a discussion on that fairly soon, okay?
Thank you, Mayor, that's one of my biggest concerns, thank you.
You bet. All right, any other council members for Mr. Duffy?
No questions, I'd just like to make a comment on Linda having a hard time hearing, or the two of them. I've been on that end of it many times, it's not just Joe. It's, it's really hard
It's everybody.
To hear whoever's up there talking.
Okay, okay.
Well, I think, I think everyone else did fine. I just stand down, so I think it's that microphone.
Okay, easy enough, well, thank you. We will, we will try and, and get as clear a communication as we can to you here. All right, thank you, Mr. Duffy. Okay, our next agenda item. Next agenda item is a presentation and discussion regarding a draft communications plan and draft communications policy.
Yeah, I'm going to do the PowerPoint real quick. Test. Test, test. I'll try to make this really fast, Mayor, thank you for the time. And thank you, Joe, and the departments yet again for squeezing their work programs. We will be coming to you with some changes in terms of priority and what we're able to accomplish on the council's strategic plan as a result of bringing the budget gap closed. I wanted to talk to the council today. Back in January, council requested that we make a report on our communications planning efforts and our use of media. And I wanted to run through some slides real quick and catch council up with where, what we have done as, as staff and where we think we need to go. A, a good while back, we put together a staff work group consisting of the attorney clerk, folks in my office, IT, HR, development services, and we brought in some professionals from outside. Several PIO officers from other organizations here in Yalva County. The staff work group has met regularly to try and, and do some scoping and put together a plan. And our, our message today is, from what we have been able to discover, we believe that the plan and the policies are going to be living, working documents for a while until we have had enough experience and we have gotten enough built to be able to cinch them shut. So we're thinking a year or two is going to take for us to get these nailed down. Council's strategic plan speaks to community engagement and communications. The Chino Valley employees over the last, over the 2014 year, develop core values. One of them is responsible communications. Our staff has defined that as expressing ideas effectively with respectful, forthright, positive, and tactful communications that keep staff current, listening and seeking clarification and understanding context, as well as providing complete answers so people understand the, the entire explanation, and receiving constructive criticism with civility. And then the ICMA's Code of Ethics, Tenant 9, is focused on communication. So we have a pretty good foundation here in Chino Valley of moving forward with a communications plan. The items in the left column are more traditional notions of what communications would consist of. And, and they're fairly traditional. In the middle are emerging areas of communication, and over on the right are some, some new areas and then new tools for communications. And I just put this up because it used to be communications was radio, TV, and newspaper. And, and it is so much more now. I, I robbed some slides from a presentation I saw in 2014. 90% of American adults have some sort of cellphone. Over half of them are using a smartphone, about half of them are using tablets. Three quarters of the people who have phones, of the 90%, are using location-based services. That means they're able to fire up their device and use it where they are to get information about what's around them. About half of them use social networking regularly on their phone. When you look at the people that are using social networking, of the 18 to 29 age group, 90% of the people 18 to 29 that are using the internet are using social networking. 78% of the 30 to 49-year-olds that have internet access are using social networking. Even the seniors are beginning to get up there around 50%. And I know, I know you hate Facebook, I'm sorry.
I almost said my Pinterest account is out of control, so.
The, what, what I'm trying to demonstrate here is, there are a lot of people that are using this, this method of communications. And, and out of all the social media that, that's being used, Facebook is the big gorilla in the room. When you look at plain old text messaging, it has its role to play. Because 58% of the people have smartphones, but 40% of the people have texts, you know, just plain old flip phones. And you need to be able to reach out to those people, too. These averages in the blue down there were staggering. The average number of times that people look at their phone per day is 150 times. I, I can't imagine looking at my phone that often, but these are the numbers, and, and this research is solid. This isn't made up stuff. The median number of texts per day for somebody 18 to 24 is 109 text messages a day. I mean, don't people talk to each other?
No.
No, they don't.
That's the problem.
Yeah, so the, the thing in the bottom right was what really struck me, though. The read rate of texts within the first 15 minutes of sending is 97%. This is immediate communication. This, the, these are people that are paying attention to that phone, and they're reading those messages when they come in. The, these are analytics off of the Town of Chino Valley's Facebook page. What surprised me, when you look at the blue chart, that's times of day. Midnight's on the left, midnight's on the right. And that blue area is the number of people that are on Facebook looking at Chino Valley. And from about 6:00 AM, there's 100 people looking at Chino Valley on Facebook. And it hovers at about 275 to 300 up until about 11 o'clock at night. And at midnight, there's 120 people looking at Chino Valley on Facebook. And it's hard to imagine. The, the really staggering thing, though, was this graph in orange, that's the month of March. And those peaks, those, those are peaking at 2,000 people seeing posts about Chino Valley on Facebook. The blue stuff is people that have liked Facebook and they're following us. The orange posts are just people that are seeing the posts about Chino Valley.
Vice Mayor Croft made an observation earlier, if we can get jobs for those people, then they.
Something that could be done at night. Right. But the, the point here is, I think, there is a very consistent number of people all day long interested in Chino Valley for some reason or another. If you look at the makeup of the people that are visiting our page, the gray area is the average Facebook participant. So for the age group 18 to 24, 6% of the women and 5% of the men are looking at Facebook. And you can see, we're really kind of missing out on that, we're the dark blue there. So, so this age group, the younger generation, is not really participating much in our Facebook site. But when you look over to the right and you look at 35 to 44, we're almost double the percentage of women on the, in average for Facebook participation. So we already have working age and seniors beyond the Facebook averages participating in our sites, but what we don't have is the younger generation, and they're the ones who are using Facebook even more than the older generations are. So there is a vast number of people out there that would, that would use Facebook if it had relevant information on it to those age groups. I included this slide, back in 2014, I went to this conference about digital government. These are all of the things that local governments are beginning to focus on in terms of using data and computers within their administration. We are doing none of this. And, and until we have a plan, we really shouldn't. Because we, we really need to focus on how we're going to spend our money. Now, we are, we are firing up a new website, and it has some of these functionalities in it. And as we engage those functionalities, we will plan ahead and, and start to leverage our technology. But there is a huge range of service to the public that we're not offering. So we have a communications plan. Our plan is a guide for staff to create better communications in an organized, efficient manner. The media policy is council's direction to us on how council wants us to get that done. And its policy on the management of communication, as well as HR policy on how our employees use technology and social, social media. You have in front of you this timeline, and I apologize for the, the small size on the screen. There, there just wasn't a way to zoom in and capture it all, but I did want you to understand the timeline of what we have done to date. If you look, 2013 in May, that's when I discovered that the town had not secured the town's name in all of these social networking venues. The Town of Chino Valley was up for grabs for whoever wanted it. So we went out and nailed down Facebook, LinkedIn, YouTube. We, we registered for all of those channels so that they wouldn't, so they wouldn't be controlled by somebody else. We started looking at Facebook policy. The light blue blocks are training that we received as staff. In September of 2013, we spoke with the town clerk and the attorney about wanting to put something on Facebook after we had read policies for a while. And the guidance that we got was, as long as you use it as a, a straight-up electronic bulletin board and you don't allow any dialogue, you're in good shape. So that's what we did, and we started putting posts up on Facebook to see if there was enough interest to warrant using that as a communications channel. And over about the next four or five months, we saw enough growth that established we were going to see enough users. We, we now have about 725 folks following our page with a, I think our, our largest, I think the, the largest engagement we've seen so far was about 12, 12,000 people seeing a post. And that was the RNL, the RNL Fire Study. So you can follow along, in 2014, we received some more training, we evaluated where we were with Facebook. And then in about May, we decided, gosh, there's enough people, there's enough growth, there's acceleration in participation on Facebook. We need to start a, a work group and consider a plan. And that's when we started meeting and, and figuring out how we needed to approach managing all this. January 2015, we had a request from council to bring forward a plan. And we had planned on bringing a draft to council in June, but we accelerated that, and, and here we are in March with a rough draft. It is a very rough draft. We don't have a whole lot of meat on the bone, but we're moving in the right direction.
Okay.
I've got the structure of the plan here on this slide. The structure of the communications policy here on this slide. This is what's embedded in the outlines that were attached to your agendas. And so this is a beta presentation of our new website. And you see, and I apologize for the viewers at home, they may not be able to see that, this, but there are functions at the bottom of the website where we, we offer people a way to engage with the town. And through appropriate contracts for backups, we can get a service for backup on our website to, and on Facebook to ensure we don't have any risks with state regulations on public documents. We will have ways to engage the public and receive input and feedback from them on, on items that are important to them. And with that, if, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, otherwise I would hand it off to Cecilia.
I, I had just one quick question before I ask our council members that are on the phone. I believe the. I believe the City of Sedona has begun something like this community, community voice feedback, where they send and receive, it's an active, I guess you could say, not really a bulletin board, but where members of the community say, you know, what's going on at Road Four North, or there's, how come the potholes aren't being repaired on Road Two South, those kind of things. This community voice button, is that going to be tied in with that, or is, is community voice simply a, a bulletin board where folks can interact?
It is a, a place where dialogue can occur, but because it's on the town's website, and the website is backed up and it's compliant with state requirements for public documents, we're, we're covered in terms of any risks or open meeting law or public document requirements. And so, somebody, you know, we monitor that for appropriate language, and, and we reserve, we will reserve the right to eliminate comments that are derogatory or profane. And I think we have the ability to do that with the terms of use that would be employed in people that come to visit the site, but there's a, a dialogue function that exists there.
Okay, okay. I'll, I'll have more questions in the future on that one, I'm sure, before I ask our, our council members that are here. Ms. Hatch, could you pick up any of that, or was that sort of mumbled also?
No, he was perfect, I heard every word of his, I, I guess it might be the quality of Joe's voice or something.
Okay.
He, he was very clear.
Okay.
Of course, I have to assume that I have the documents, you're not on Channel 15, so I'm not seeing anything.
Oh, okay, oh, what they're, what's up on the board right now is sort of a, a Facebook page, Mr. Smith, could you describe that?
This is the mock-up of our town website. This is what it'll look like now that we've had it reworked. And I would, I would add that each department does have pages within here, and within those departmental pages will be areas where postings can occur from those departments, immediate alerts, and we have verified that we will have the ability to publish those alerts out through text messages and Facebook and other means. So, it's going to increase the functionality of our ability to communicate by a long, long way.
Okay, excellent.
If, if I could ask, what's the advantage, if we've got all of that, what, what advantage does Facebook have following this?
Well, I would say that the number of people using Facebook as their main feed for updates is much, much larger than the number of people going to our website. And so, once a person likes the Town of Chino Valley's page, they get a constant feed from that. And I don't know that, that our website will have functionality to send things to individuals like that, but we will be able to send it to a social networking site, and anybody that has signed up for our news feed there, they'll get it.
Okay, okay.
You know, my, my understanding is, from the reading I've done, that you don't have any control, and that just because someone likes that is not necessarily that they're going to get automatic updates from, if Facebook exerts some control over what appears on those pages, that just because someone likes the town doesn't mean you get every update. That was from a fairly recent report that I read, so I'd like to know, you know, where your information is coming from, so that I can read that as well, because the more I'm reading, there's not that much control over, Facebook controls that.
Okay. So if, if you would, Mr. Smith, please get with Ms. Hatch and, and
Sure.
get her up to speed on that. I know Vice Mayor Croft is excited about what they're featuring there.
That's my girls.
That's, I know, I'm, I'm a redhead myself. Any other questions?
I feel you're a redneck.
Okay, redneck, okay. Thank you, council members.
One last thing, Mayor, I would add that one of the reasons why we have the plan is to explore a wide variety of communications channels and venues, in order to increase the coverage and exposure of the information that we have to share. To date, we've spent zero dollars on Facebook, we've spent zero dollars on YouTube, we've spent zero dollars on LinkedIn, we've spent zero dollars on Twitter, and as long as they continue to be free outlets for us that people sign up to, it, it's an opportunity for us to leverage our efforts at zero cost to the Town of Chino Valley.
I know, I've, I've, you and I, Robert, have had numerous discussions on this, and, and I realize I'm somewhat of a dinosaur on it, I know that we can, we can get a lot of good information out to a lot of folks, and, and I understand it is a, a useful tool if it's, if it's carefully managed, so. Council members, any comments or, or questions?
Well, the interesting thing would be is, you said it right there, to manage. And when it comes to this kind of stuff, I got to look at the, the time spent, what does it cost to manage it? Okay, these are all kinds of ways to get out to the public more, we haven't been in, using any of them, and we still find ourselves in the news quite a bit, so, you know, not really sure how much more help we need. I, I'm just not really a fan of it, I know it's the coming thing, but I, it's, I, I'm, I'm not amazed, I'm appalled at how much time people spend on it.
Yeah. Okay. Others?
With that, I'd introduce Cecilia for the follow-up.
All right, thank you.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. Got the short one up here. Getting attacked. Okay, just a minute, what we're going to do for this portion is, we sent out the communications plan to you last week on Friday, and kind of just like to go through the plan a little bit and ask if you have any comments that you'd like to make on it, and suggestions, et cetera, et cetera. I appreciate the fact that maybe some of you don't utilize some of the communication tools that we've outlined in here, but it, it does appear that the people in our community do use most of them, or some of them, and it does vary quite a bit, and that's why we tried to make this as comprehensive as we could and try and cover every kind of tool that might be out there that we know of now and that we might be wanting to utilize in the near future.
Good.
So I know this is a twelve-page document, so I'm thinking we'll just go over it section by section, if that's okay?
Good.
Ask for any feedback. If you go to my agenda items, okay. Gotcha. No, go ahead, you're, looks like you're there.
It's called Agenda Slow, not Agenda Quick.
It's not Agenda Quick, you're right, good.
You are.
It's been slow.
Yeah. When they were in the E-session, we were noticing. Table one, that's what we had as a problem.
All right. Okay, so we started out with the situation and analysis, and although I am the one standing up here, there were about nine of us working on this continuously, so it's been edited and re-edited a million times. What we all noticed and have experienced, and you have too, is that most people seem to get their information from sources that aren't necessarily reliable. And if I can use you, Ms. Lake, friend of the library out here in the audience, she had even said to me that part of the reason she's coming to the meetings is because she hears so many rumors, and she likes to come to get the facts, so. Just talking about a half hour ago, and that's what she had said to me. So, if, whatever we can do to try and get the facts out there, we felt it was important. So, that's kind of what we addressed in the situation and analysis, so I didn't know if anybody had any comments on that section.
No, it's, it, it appears to be right on the money.
Okay. So the second section is the goals and objectives. And, again, going back to our core values that the employees adopted last fall, we thought it was the most important thing was to improve the delivery of and provide clear, timely, and complete information to the community on matters that concern or impact the community. So, and we felt, again, the best way to do that was using multiple forms of communication. So, does anybody have any comments on some of our goals that were in there?
No, no.
Okay. Target audiences, again, the most effective thing we thought was trying to reach the greatest number of residents possible, that was one of the ultimate goals of having any kind of, using any kind of communication avenues, and we knew by, that we would have to utilize several different avenues in order to hit the broadest number of people. So then we came down to key messages, and I don't know if, that's probably not the right title, but these are the types of avenues that, or the ways that we would use communication. So, we're trying to expand this a little bit and to involve the community as well, which is where we come in with nonprofits and other service organizations, et cetera, so. We try and involve the community as much as we could in utilizing our communication channels and pushing stuff out to different avenues. Yes, sir?
You have about item eight on there, alerts, that would be like there's a gas leak on Road Four North.
Yeah, traffic accident on the highway, and
Really?
Yeah, something like that, we could push that out. And there's lots of different ways we can do that. Right now, we do have a Twitter, the police department has a Twitter account, so they will Twitter something like that, well, they'll tweet something like that, I don't know what the verb tense is on that word. And otherwise, with our website, we can also do the same type of thing, people can sign up for alerts on certain things that interest them, whether it's even just a council agenda packet, and things will get sent to them. I don't know if you'd really call that one an alert, but there could be a road closing, stuff like that.
Okay, accidents and that kind of stuff, that's great.
Again, it might not, it might not be how, you want to get your information, but some people do. So, spokespeople and partners. Ultimately, I think we would be utilizing somebody in a communication manager kind of role is how we're looking at it, it's probably too much for a current existing employee to absorb this into his or her position. So we would utilize a communications manager who would either be a contract, through a contractor, an employee of some, at some level. Any questions on any of that?
No, I, just a, a quick comment, that I know Councilman Turner brought up the thought that, that was running through my head, all this managing of communications, but if we're going to have accurate information, get out to the community in, through a, a myriad of different methods, it pretty much is going to require something like that, so. I, I, at first, I was, I was balking at it, but I can, I can see where timely and accurate information, it, it may be worth the cost, so.
Well, and I think consistency as well
Yeah.
is also important. Methods and tactics, I think this is best going to be handled by Spencer, because it kind of goes through some of the different avenues and some of the technicalities and how they, how they communicate.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just to follow up on what she had just said, the, the alerting feature, it was one of the things that we actually just had in our training for our new website. Very amazing alerting feature, they have a bar that comes up across the top of the website, I mean, just, if there's something really, really big going on, you can put it out there, so, and you can really reach a lot of people, so, really, really neat tools. But, within methods and tactics, we tried to identify all the avenues of communication that we as a town could potentially pursue to communicate with the residents. Some of the methods, such as the website and Access 13, we already use those things, but, so we tried to think of ways of how we might be able to expand those, enhance them, to get more use out of them and get more consumption by the audiences within Chino Valley. Some of the avenues that you see listed there are new avenues that we may not have explored yet, but they, they're just being identified, some methods we needed to develop further. Some of these communication avenues, we may not be able to pursue at all due to feasibility and available staff and financial requirements. But it, within a communication plan, we need to at least try to identify as many avenues as we can for our, our usage, and those areas that we, we can try to pursue, and try to get a consistent message out to those, those residents that may not be getting the proper information. Now, I'm, I'm certain that, and I, I don't want to get down into the details of this, but I'm certain that it is by no means an exhaustive list, so as we develop this plan further, I think the hope is to continually fine-tune and expand this list to ensure that we try to bring in any additional communication avenues that may be a method to reach those audiences in Chino Valley, to get that information in front of them. I'm sure many of you are aware that a lot of times, we, we struggle with a group of people that sometimes becomes very apathetic for things that are going on around them. And so, sometimes, you know, trying to get the message in front of them is very difficult, and use, using these methods, we think that this is, these are some of the methods, we might be able to get that information out there, you know, say, look, here, see this, see this, and so maybe we can start to eliminate some of that rumor and hearsay where they heard something, and then they see something else, and they go, oh, well, I saw this, I know you told me this, but I saw this, and I saw here, and here, and here. So trying to get a consistent message, I think, is extremely important, and getting it out via all these communication avenues, so they can see it in various places.
Can we roll this down so we can see it?
Excuse me, what?
Can we roll this down?
Yes, I can. Hang on. So, we have newspaper, let's see, is that the top of the list? Yeah. Okay. Newspaper, we have bulletin boards listed, we have the town website, and we talk about a lot of the tools that are in the new town website. Social media is just one of the avenues that we have at our disposal, the Access 13, looking to expand that, try to get more information, more programming on there. Radio, maybe podcasting even, even, again, that podcasting is something that people actually, surprisingly, have started to utilize on a more regular basis. If we can get a consistent message out on that, that would be a potential avenue. Digital signage systems, email notifications, which we have now acquired through our, our new web platform, and maybe utility bill mailers. And I'm sure you guys may be able to identify more, but this being a document that's ever-changing, we'd love to incorporate any other methods that might be beneficial to the community. Some of the things in IT that we're going to be trying to utilize is trying to address what you guys had talked about, where you could say, this is a full-time job for somebody, right? Sometimes, we might be able to utilize these IT infrastructure, the new website, to try to get the information to disseminate from a single location and get it out to multiple forms of communication, rather than to tie up someone, they can hit one avenue and get it out to multiple places. Any questions on that?
Any questions from you folks? Any questions from our folks on the telephone?
None for me, I'm good.
Okay, excellent. We, Spencer covered quite a few different items, and, and as I, for one, am learning, it seems like there's a new method of communication every week, so as our town manager said, we're, we're, this is going to be a living document, I suppose, for a while, so.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I, I had one more thing to add. Our plan also ranges across the concept of the town having some sort of liaison with the other major organizations that are the other major organizations that are in our area, like the school district, and the fire district, and other large organizations, where we would be able to take information that we have at our command and provide it to them when they're in a meeting format, if there's something germane to what they're discussing. And there may be ways that we can take information from their meetings and share it with our viewing audience, if it's formal information that their organization is producing. And so, we're trying to create a wider communications channel between the organizations that are in Chino Valley, in addition to just pushing information from the town out to the community.
Okay, so we would be, say, receiving reports from the sheriff department about stuff that they were doing, something like that?
It could be that we would be sharing information about what they're doing
Okay.
Through our communications channels, because we may have some viewers that aren't aware of what they're doing, and it's germane to what's going on here in town. And there may be things that we are doing in town that's part of our official business that they, in their meetings, need to be aware of, that they want to share with the people that are in their organizations.
Okay, okay, excellent. Yes, ma'am?
Okay, one thing I wanted to mention is, this week, we had the opportunity to sit down with the editor at the Prescott newspaper, and we know that right now in our newspaper, there's not really a whole lot of coverage on town business, and she had mentioned that she has been there as their editor since September, I believe, and her intention is to create probably a larger newspaper to some respect, and a broadsheet, but she also wants to create a government page. So, she's looking to have more content that would be just regular, what's going on here with the government. It wouldn't just be us, it would be the school district, fire district, et cetera. But it would give an opportunity for readers who are interested, every, you can just turn right to that page, and there's what's happening. So, that also is gonna be coming up. The next thing we had on here was just an example of the information flow and how it would happen on a flow chart. And I think what we're really trying to show you here is really, the message is one, and we'll create that one message, and that it just gets pushed out to a whole bunch of different things. So, right now, we do a lot, we're inefficient in how we communicate to our public right now, and that's just the way that we've had to cobble things together. But with some of our newer technology and just learning, experience, et cetera, we're finding out that there's a lot of different ways that we can just create the one message, and then push it out to all different avenues that are appropriate. So, it really won't be more expensive, it's just a different way of producing the product.
Okay.
And the last thing that's on this part of the flow chart is, I think, something of great concern to the council. It has to do with records retention. So, we are learning about the different types of records retention that's required for each different types of communication channel. So, that is also something that will be constantly changing as the state even wraps their arms around, how do we, what do we require for text messages? All different kinds of media that anybody might use, because there aren't even rules for some of them yet, and/or else they're very sketchy still on how they want those records retained. So, there are some software packages that we're looking at for things for Facebook, and Spencer will talk to some of those. But otherwise, everything we do, we'll try and keep as much up to date on any of the records retention laws through the clerk's office. We've been working with Jamie and with our town attorney on trying to make sure that we'll have all that incorporated into our plan, as it evolves. After that, we really just have some miscellaneous things on how we would handle items that get posted, and if they need to be changed because we had the wrong date or something. Well, we don't wanna just go into Facebook and just change it, because that's a record. So, we just had some policies on how we would
Oh, okay.
Handle any of those kinds of things, because we have to retain the originals. Retraction, same things. And then we get down to things that have to do with policy on media contact. So, for instance, something tragic happens here, we just can't have media calling anybody on staff, and we just wanna kinda control how the information is given out to the, out to the public, so that it's, again, a managed, a managed approach. So, we just kinda talked about how we would try and funnel everything through a communications manager as much as possible. Of course, council always has access to any kind of media, and that's fine, but we would try and funnel anything on the staff side through a communications manager. And then we establish some goals for ourselves on things that we'd have to keep looking at, as far as making sure that we looked at metrics so we could judge how well our communication was getting out to the public. And we don't even have, you know, all the different methods have different ways that you would measure them. So, we have to get all that kinda buttoned down. We're gonna keep evolving the whole plan too, as well. And what we'll also do is train all the employees on how the communication plan will work, and et cetera, make sure they're all versed on, if things happen, how they have to communicate. Facebook and Google also offer different ways. Robert shared some ways that we get statistics on Facebook. We will keep digging into that and finding out how effective those things are to our public here. So, we have some work to do on that, there's a lot of data. And then, lastly, the part of the plan will, Phyllis will be working on a lot of this with the legal, on how we do our communication. And I think we've told you right now, everything we're planning on doing is pretty much supposed to be a one-way communication. We're trying not to have anything on Facebook that would be a two-way communication, so that it has to be monitored. And we've done some things to make sure that that doesn't happen right now, because we don't wanna retain the records, we don't have, wanna have to monitor everything for appropriateness, et cetera. So, right now, we're using it as a one-way communication, that is our intent. I think the website offers more two-way communication, but again, we don't have the records problem with our website. So, Phyllis will help us develop some of these things with records retention. And then we're also in the process of developing an employee policy, having to do with, and I don't know if you guys wanna go over that one too, the proposed policy.
No.
Was that a no?
That was a no, but, yeah.
Maybe next time.
That's fine. It's really what you're seeing here, just putting into a policy for.
Okay.
Okay.
I just have one brief question. You are checking with other communities, 'cause we shouldn't have to reinvent the lightbulb here if there's something we can steal from Phoenix, or?
We, yeah, parts of this have been beg, borrowed, and steal. I will say, a lot of communities have, they'll have policies on how to use their Facebook, et cetera, but they don't really have a whole communication plan, have not found a communication plan that was, I think in some of the military places, they had those, but not so much cities and towns have.
Okay, okay.
But they had the policies on just media contact, how to use social media, using your, bring your own device to work, those things.
Yeah, we, we're gonna need some guidelines, because this is, it gets more complex by the day, so, thank you.
It does, okay. Any other questions?
No, I think it's good to start.
All right.
Okay.
All right, thank you. If there's no further discussion, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
I second it.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.